Yeah, it's now live streaming, yeah. Hey, welcome everybody. To the town council meeting on 28th of June. Members of the public may be hearing this. Have we got any members of the public present? No. So just bear in mind that this has been recorded or it's live stream, so. Going forward. Just take care. Don't want any swearing or anything like that. Okay, so. First item on the agenda, apologies for absence. Okay, thank you. And second item. Oh, she. Oh, on the. She's on the, yeah, online. So apologies for absence done to declaration of interest and request for dispensations, anybody? Nope. Oh. That's amazing.
Yes, Chair, item 10. 10D. When it comes to the adoption of committee reports, I've got a keen interest and I won't be voting.
Okay, thank you. Noted. Okay, item three, minutes of meeting at the town council held Tuesday, the 4th of May, 2021. Does anybody wish to? Yep. Can do. Okay. Can I ask for confirmation that these are correct and then we'll go to the actions? So councillor Roach and councillor John Byrne seconded. Okay. I will have a look through. Page 161. Page 162. And then. Page 163. Page 164. And. 165. Yeah. Okay, so go to agenda 94. It's no progress of actions. Councillor Jay Burns passed chain of office to councillor L Smith, which was done the same day. So that's happened. Item five, reports from district council position whose person to Havewill and the public forum. So is there anyone from the public? Anyone present, so. So start from please. Have you got any thoughts on this? No. Yeah, you sent a report round. Councillor Mason.
Yes, Chair, I emailed a report. My first from county councillor point of view and can take any questions.
Okay, that's fine. Yes, any questions for councillor Mason and his county councillor? No. And the other county councillors, if you guys want to be, councillor Roach. Okay, thank you. Okay then, so we'll go to district councillors. Any reports from the district councillors? Oh, sorry, on the councillor's station.
Thank you, Chair. The audio is degrading. I could not actually hear councillor Roach and I could barely hear Colin speaking then either.
Okay, councillor Roach, have you got your microphone on when you spoke? Yeah, it might be that he didn't unmute himself.
I'll just repeat that then, councillor Stitching, you can hear that now. Sorry, we hadn't got the mics on. I've just said that I will continue to certify twice weekly coronavirus reports that we get from county to all members.
Okay, thank you. Any other district councillors? Nope. Okay then, so members of the public are welcome to make statements or questions at this time. I don't think we've got any members of the public. Okay, so item 7A, significant events on the end of year accounts. Consider whether any events that occurred during the financial year or after the year end have consequences or potential consequences on the authority's finances. If any such events are identified, the authority then needs to determine whether the financial consequences need to be reflected in the statement of accounts. Okay, so any comments on that?
In terms of such things, the obviously coronavirus status to review the budget.
Okay, so I heard you, I hear you coming through now, so you seem. Okay.
Chair, I think Colin's coming through on your microphone, not on his own microphone, that's the trouble.
Oh, okay, I see what you mean, yeah, okay. Okay.
Sorry, Chair, can I just ask what happened at item six?
Apologies, Paulie, yeah. It was deferred because Colin's trying to sort out his microphone.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Right, so as you were saying, Colin. It's the coronavirus then we're talking about. Situation.
So the coronavirus, we had a budget review in June. So the council then followed a different path to that. What it was going to cost to run the council. Obviously, we also furloughed and took advantage of provided grants.
Okay, so do you need us to make a decision at this point? Do any events that occurred? I'll be having to agree on this.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So can I have a poser for that? Councillor Roach. And second one. Councillor Marks. Okay, so item, sorry.
As I can't get my microphone working, but hopefully I hope sufficiently, President Paul Allen's shaking his head. And so I'm not sure what I can do about that, but just in terms of item six, it's simply whether there's any council would like to offer their services as representatives.
Okay. Is there anybody willing to offer their services? Havewill's festival champion. Do we know what that involves at all? Yes, councillor Marks.
Sorry, could we just have a bit of background on exactly what the format for the festival of Suffolk is, what the proposal is and the plan is, so that we understand what it is we're electing or nominating ourselves for? How big is it going to be, what the focus is, and that will help us to understand what we're putting ourselves forward for?
Hey, does anyone, any comments on that? Or is there much about that?
Well, the answer was no, it was no information. There was a letter that I conversed with. We don't know it's made up of the asking for councils to according to the chairman. I assume they will then send out some more information later.
Yeah, it seems difficult to sort of make that decision, doesn't it, on that basis only?
I mean, I would potentially be interested, but not until I know the magnitude of what it is that the proposal is. I think if we could have more depth on that proposal, that would be really helpful, please. Well, from my perspective, I don't know what the council is feeling.
Councillor Roach.
Good one, then. The proposal would be further cycle to the next council meeting so that we can seek some further information and find out what the workload associated with the role is. So whoever volunteers for it knows what they're committing to. But I suspect that there'll be quite a lot of work to it and it'll be quite, as it gets nearer to the festival. So I think we need to know what the task is before seeking a volunteer and give.
Okay, thank you. So councillor Roach is proposing that we defer this item. Can I have a second on that? Councillor Marks. Okay, thank you. So we move on then to 7B, review of internal controls. Consider the internal, sorry. Oh, councillor Smith with that.
Give me a moment on that last one.
So did we do the last one?
Didn't vote.
We didn't vote on the.
Oh, I do apologize, yeah, we didn't vote on that. Significant events, 7A, so we had a poser. And we had a second, we need to vote, so a show of hands, please. Yeah, I see, I see unanimous. Yeah. I'm mute myself. So I'll continue on here. Those people at home, can they hear me? Just give me a thumbs up or, yeah, okay, thank you. So we'll go through 7B, review of internal controls. To consider the internal audit history report for the year, March 31st, 2021, which was attached. Has everybody had a chance to see that? Yep. So did you want to do all these in one block, Colin, or can we just do it one by one?
We need to do it one by one.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so consider that. And can I have a poser for that? Sorry, councillor Mason and councillor Roach and a vote. Yes, please, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. 9. Yeah. And item 2B2, to consider the review of internal controls for the council. Again, that was attached. So if I can have a poser for that. Councillor Hanlon. And a second one. Councillor Roach. And a show of hands, please. Yep. Okay. To consider the review of the internal audit, which was also attached. Can we have a poser? And councillor Mason. Second one. Councillor Roach. And a vote, please. Yeah, thank you. And item four, to review the terms of reference specification and effectiveness of the internal audit, which was also attached. So if there's any comments first. A poser then, please. Councillor Roach. And second one. Councillor Hanlon. And a show of hands, please. Yeah, thank you very much. Okay, so we move on to item 7C, the annual accounts and return. So the adoption of the annual accounts, the income and expenditure, number one was attached. We've got those here. Yes. So first, the comments, anybody? No. So can we have a poser again for those? Councillor Marks. And a second one. Councillor Davison. And a show of hands, please. It's unanimous, thank you. And the balance sheet, which was also attached. Any comments on that? No. Okay, poser. Yep, councillor Burns. And a second one, councillor Mason. And a show of hands, please. Thank you. Item C2, to approve sections 1 and 2 of the annual governance and accountability return for the year ending 31st of March, 2021. So the first is the annual governance statement. I mean, that's just to follow, is that? Sent on? Okay. Yeah, I think I saw that actually in the in the documents. Oh yes, it was forwarded afterwards, doesn't it, yeah.
What I can say is that the document you have presented is one of the
Okay.
So section 1 and the government statement. It's a matter of deciding whether or not those are, you're happy that those are all correct.
Okay.
That's. We could have a vote on that.
Yeah, okay. Yep, so a poser for councillor Burns. Second one, councillor Roach. And a show of hands, please. Yep, thank you. And then we have the accounting statements. Want to see those? Yeah, so can we have a poser for that? Councillor Burns. And a second one. Councillor Roach. And a vote, please. Chairman. Lovely, thank you. So the next one's 3, earmark treasures as at 31st of March, 2021. To note, these were adopted on the 26th of April, 2021. So we need to vote on that. A poser. Councillor Hanlon and councillor Roach seconding. And vote, please. Yep. Okay. The assets register is next, which I think you've got up here on the screen now, have you, Colin?
Yes, on the screen.
Mm-hmm. So is there anything? Anyone's got any comments? Councillor Burns.
I don't know if you can hear me.
I can a little bit through here.
Okay. It's on maximum volume here. If you can hear me, okay, it was just Colin, I think he's going to do a secondary sheet to this. I don't know if he wants to explain.
So there was a question was asked about some of the historic assets that were disposed of a long time ago. And how come they're still on the asset register? The proper practices say that they they say how to show that they're disposed of, but they don't say how they should be removed. And I've looked into this and taken advice from Salk. And my suggestion is that we create an assets disposal register. And then two years after an item is written off on the assets register, it will be removed from the assets register and put on to the disposal register. It'll stay there forever, but it won't bung up the asset register, which is about 25% full of things we don't have on board, so it is getting a bit silly. So if people are happy for us to set that up.
Okay, so can we have a poser for that then? So councillor Burns and second councillor McMenness. And we'll take a vote on that then, please. Yeah, lovely, thank you. So that's the asset register. The risk register is next, it's on the screen. Any comments on that at all? Nope. Okay, so poser. Councillor Burns and second one, councillor Smith. Dave Smith. And can we have a vote? Lovely, thank you. So that's that. So item 7D is to confirm all relevant insurances are in place. To note that insurance is reviewed in October 2020 and remain in place. So poser, please. Councillor Hanlon, second one. Councillor Smith. And a show of hands. Yep, lovely, thank you. So that's that done. Right, going on to item 8, I did circulate the mayor's report. Hopefully you had a chance to have a read of it. Are there any questions? I just want to make a note that I was really pleased with the support I got specifically on the day that I had to get up early in the morning. Because councillor Roach was there. Obviously councillor Burns and councillor McCroney were there as well. Have I missed anyone else? I don't think so. Councillor Marks joined me during the day because we did the on Taurus's flag as well, as well in the afternoon. But what I forgot to mention in the report was that Nick was interviewed on the radio as well afterwards. They tried to get hold of me, but I've gone back to bed, I'm afraid. So, so yeah, so Nick did that on my behalf. So that was nice to have that recognition on Radio Suffolk. Okay, so thank you very much. Okay, so we'll go on to the item 9, One Havewill Partnership. To receive a verbal report from members and clerk on the board meeting that took place 10th of June and any other matter of note in respect to the partnership. Over to you, Colin, perhaps first? Okay, councillor Hanlon.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I hope people can hear me. Yeah, on the, as far as One Havewill is concerned, the board is concerned. At the moment, we've got three councillors from the Labour group, because it includes the mayor. And only one from the independents. We've also got two Conservatives that are not representing the town council, but representing other councils from the town council. With that in mind, I intend to relinquish my post. So that, and I would like to propose councillor John Byrne, who's an independent. And I hope he will take up that post in my place. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I think we do actually later on the agenda, yeah, item 15. So we can actually do that, I think, under item 15, when we are pointing to the various committees. So thank you for that. Was there anything else we need to report? Councillor Marks.
Yes, thank you. Nothing much has changed from the West Suffolk Hospital plan for redevelopment, which is quite important, except that we do have a commitment from them, a firm commitment, that some of the outreach services will go to the near Western Way development, which is extremely good news, in fact, because that does give that a firm commitment. We're still waiting. Obviously, we're a long way from knowing what services will be co-located, but they are looking to keep only acute services on that site. And that's something we're keeping a very close eye on, because co-location of services within the footprint of that hospital could either be beneficial or not to us, because if they co-locate something to Stone Market, we'll have challenges in getting there. So we do need to keep a close eye on that. Just one real significant and very sad event, Covid. Unfortunately, for a lot of people, was very challenging and for Lois, it was extremely challenging. Instead of having weekly meetings with every doctor of surgery, she was having daily meetings. And as a result, Lois has decided to resign. She has been an extraordinary support to us here in Havewill. And I think it would be very nice if this council acknowledged the contribution that she made or has made to the work here in Havewill. She has tried very hard to work with the surgeries and make things better for us. So I would like to propose that we thank Laris for her contribution. She will be leaving and I, I don't think she'll be at the next meeting. I think she leaves in September and we don't yet know who's going to replace her, but she'll be, I think she's been around for about 20 years, so she's going to be a very hard act to follow.
Okay, thank you. Are you proposing that we write a letter then from the council to that effect? Okay, thank you. So any one second that? Councillor Mason. And can we have a vote on that, please? Six, seven, yeah, I mean, yeah. Okay, so that's. So anyone against? No. Right. So that's, that's moved. Councillor Mason.
I don't, I don't think so. There's something that I want to ask regarding that, that agenda item, but.
That's fine, yeah, councillor Mason, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I, like a number of other West Suffolk councillors, attended West Suffolk Council and during that meeting, Havewill Hub was mentioned six times. One Havewill Partnership in March was challenged, according to the minutes, by Ian Gallan, the chief exec, to think big regarding the Havewill Hub or whatever facilities are going to be. At what point is when One Havewill going to do a presentation informing or keeping town council up to date with developments? I am aware that it could be sensitive in nature and might be needed to be turned out of session. And secondly, at what point can we invite the new chair of One Havewill to Havewill Town Council so that we can meet and possibly ask any questions?
So are you proposing we perhaps invite them to the next meeting or? Sorry, I've got a bit of feedback on it.
I would certainly like to make that proposal, whether it's got support, yeah.
Okay, okay, sorry, councillor Burns, did you wish to say something?
Let's see if this works. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. It wasn't about that particular subject, but it was. It wasn't about that particular subject, but it was to do with the presentation we had at West Suffolk regarding the hospital prior to the Western Way briefing, which I asked Alex Wilson over there to edit down, because I thought it was an extremely useful briefing of the health stuff. No, it was very good. But of course Alex did say as part of that, perhaps One Haverhill, Steve Dunn and Kate should come over and brief us as well. So it's in the public domain, which might help what councillor Mason is talking about as well. Thank you.
Okay.
This is useful for answering councillor Mason direct. One Haverhill has as yet not been consulted or had the opportunity to contribute to the Haverhill Hub. There was supposed to be the presentation from the people working on the future of healthcare in West Suffolk Hospital. And that had to be called as the presentation was the wrong presentation. So we're hoping to get the correct presentation. We have an ex GP, Andrew Cornish, who is ready to chair a task group made up of different people that are being asked to represent Haverhill as a whole, with all the various community base up and down to levels. But there doesn't appear to be a backed process to show where all these different agents are for us to know how we can join. So I have had a discussion with Ian Gallan on that. And it may be that West Suffolk would be the best people to give a presentation on the hub, because it's going to include, potentially include some health provision. But equally, we know that GPs have made other arrangements to help, won't be coming to that hub. And we also know there will be other community-based services would go in that hub. But that's really being led by West Suffolk Council rather than One Haverhill, who merely a collection of representatives of organisations. So it may not quite work out as we originally expected, because the landscape isn't what we thought.
Do you mind if I come back?
Yeah.
Okay, that's absolutely fine. One of the issues is when you sit in a meeting and you hear the term Haverhill Hub mentioned six times, then obviously it's going to raise those questions. Are those discussions being held? I would still very much like to meet the new chair and my proposal stands, or anybody else who you think might be suitable to come for a presentation regarding the work of One Haverhill.
Okay, so can I just clarify, was that a proposal to, for them to come and just present to us as One Haverhill, particularly around the hub? So is it introduced themselves as the new chair or was it particularly to talk about the hub? Oh, sorry. Councillor Marks?
Thank you. It's enormously complicated at the moment, because you've got, I think the new West Suffolk Hospital threw a slightly curved ball in, in that because they are co-locating services. So what we're looking for in Haverhill overall is enhanced services for Haverhill. And that will come in a number of ways, as Colin just explained, partly through enhanced services through the GP surgeries, partly through what West Suffolk Hospital decides to co-locate and where they co-locate it. And also Sarah Howard has been tasked by Kate Thornton, who she's working for in a different capacity, to bring together as integrated care, working for the whole population. So she's got an umbrella over the health and education, all of the services that inform into caring for people in a magnitude of different ways. She's working for Kate Thornton. It might be a good idea, because I'm very confused as well, quite what Sarah's doing. It might be really helpful to have Sarah Howard here. She was a really good starting point to say, what are you doing in terms of bringing lots of people together and supporting their needs, which may be health needs, maybe other needs, but ultimately it's about integrating those services. So I think if we had Sarah here, that would be a good starting point. And she works for clinical commissioning, she works for Kate Thornton. I think the new chair of One Haverhill, Colin may agree with me, I think he's just getting his feet under the table. And I think it might be really challenging him to ask him to come here and talk about health per se. He can probably come and talk very competently about education, but I think he's still getting his feet under the table, learning all the dynamics of One Haverhill. And also, there is no definition yet on quite what's coming and how it's coming. And finally, Ian Gallan is a really good port of call, because he's trying to have these discussions with West Suffolk College, Abbey Croft Leisure and all of the other associated services, so that we get a combined services hub like Mildenhall, like the Western Way, which will incorporate those services. And Steve Dunn from West Suffolk Hospital made a really, you know, interesting comment about people walking to Mildenhall Hub, their children see library books on the way in, they see the welfare people, the police are in there. So they can get a lot of services all under one umbrella. And that's the sort of thing I think that they're trying to get here. But what they don't know yet is who wants to be part of that programme, who wants to become involved? And of course, Covid hasn't helped those discussions. So it's not that nothing's happened. There's a lot happening and it is quite diverse and complicated. But if we could start with part of that, maybe Sarah Howard, who was a former chair of One Haverhill, that might help to understand a bit about how these combined services are going to work together. Just a proposal.
Okay, so we have a proposal from Jo. Are you still proposing that we ask the One Haverhill chair to attend or?
It would be nice to meet the One Haverhill chair. I mean, I don't want to necessarily make things difficult for the gentleman who's just taken over. You know, One Haverhill is an important body in the town and it would be nice as a town council to meet and hear from from the new chair. I'm perfectly happy to amend regarding the health hub. An invite to Kane Thornton or Sarah Howard, whichever councillor Marks would think more suitable for a presentation on the direction of the health of Haverhill.
Okay, so we have a pose then to invite the chair of One Haverhill and also Sarah Howard with respect to talking to us about the health.
The lead for health, mental health here. And we have had some, a lot of enhancements in mental health provision here since Covid. We've now got four mental health nurses based here. And Dr Catandy also works on clinical commissioning. She's a lead for mental health provisions. So again, you might want to invite her here on one of the meetings just to talk about what we've got, where we're going, what her plans are for the future. Because I know that lots of the councillors are concerned about mental health provision here. And it would be good to hear from the horse's mouth really what's happened.
Okay then, so probably we wouldn't want all three of them on the same meeting. So I think what we would pose then, from what Jo's proposal was, is to invite the three of those people that we've just mentioned at some stage over the next few months to attend our meetings. And we'll work out the finer details with Colin going forward. So if, so do I propose that? Can I have a second of that then, please? That's councillor McManus. And can we have a show of hands? Two, three, four, five. Any extensions? Any against? Nope.
I thought we had David Panel from the GP Fed coming tonight. Was that not my understanding?
He changed that because of the ongoing Covid situation, the testing. With all the testing he was doing and running all that, we asked him to delay.
Okay.
Yes. I think he only delayed it a month.
Okay. Okay, so moving on to item 10, adoption of committee reports. The first one is the planning committee. To move the adoption of the meeting, it's the planning committee meeting held on the 27th of April, which was attached to this agenda. Can I have a poser please? Councillor Hanlon? And second councillor Smith? And show of hands please. Yeah, lovely, thank you. Next one was the planning working party. The meeting's the planning working party meetings, the recommendations contained therein held 25th of May and 8th of June. Again, those were attached. So if I can have a poser? Councillor Davidson and secondaire. Councillor Smith. And vote please. Yeah, send them, thank you. Next one was the Energy and Sustainability Working Party. To move the adoption of the minutes of the Energy and Sustainability Working Party meeting and the recommendations contained therein held 15th of June 2021. So poser please, councillor Burns. Secondaire. Councillor Hanlon and show of hands. Yeah, thank you. The last one is the Leisure Community Working Party. To move the adoption of the minutes of the Leisure Community Working Party meeting and the recommendations contained therein held on 70th of May. Councillor Burns and councillor Roach. So pose in a second. And if we can have a show of hands. Yeah, lovely, thank you. Moving on. Item 11, walking routes. So you definitely a railway proposals to receive the final report on proposals and authorise expenditure on this project, which was attached to the agenda and report from councillor Davidson on potential alternative benches. Okay, so are we going to have a few first, councillor Davidson or? Are you talking about the project, Colin, or first?
Yes, I can. So you've got the report that shows you the two bench types that councillors expressed interest in last time around. And that's now all costed. So there's a map showing the location and which bench type would go where. So we're ready to go with that project. Just barring the report from councillor Davidson suggesting a change of one of the benches.
Okay, councillor Davidson, over to you.
You?
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, obviously there's a proper issue. It's a number of benches, the relation benches. And it's been possibly my really good thing.
Can you hear me now? Sorry about that. Want me to start again? I've got several concerns about the fantastic report that's been put together by Alicia. I think first of all, we've got perhaps too many benches, a total of 25 benches. I'm not really sure about some of the locations, although I can see where they're going to be. I can't really identify them all. The West Ham Park, there seems to be about another half dozen benches going in there. There's already three benches in there. I think maybe just another two would be sufficient. And really, I'd like you to reconsider basically the two benches that I know that we looked at previously in January. It's now June. Quite a few things have changed. The price of wood has changed, as an example. So I'd like the council just to have a look at this, please. Thank you.
Not sure whether I might try and write it off, but. This is part of the town council's contribution to healthy walks. Proposal through One Haverhill. Some of the bits said we did. The reason they're sending benches and their positioning is to encourage people who are not ambulance or can only walk short distances, that they can walk one bench at a time and have a rest.
And perhaps next time.
And so eventually they might be able to do the whole thing. So if we reduce another bench, it's completely removed, the entire point of the exercise, which is to encourage people who couldn't otherwise use the railway walk at all, to gradually challenge themselves to walk further each time. Hence the reason we're filling the gaps around West Ham Park, where there's some very big gaps. So walking the whole way around West Ham Park, there's basically a couple of benches at one end, nothing at the other.
Okay, councillor Davidson, if you want to return.
Yeah, thanks for that and thanks Chair. I appreciate obviously what's trying to be achieved and I totally agree that, you know, for, shall we say, older or infirm people, it is important that there is a bench that they can sit on. Obviously, the part about West Ham Park is that previous meeting, you were going to contact the parish and also the Environment Agency to see if there'd be potentially a contribution from them. Has that been done?
West Ham Park belongs to the Environment Agency and so we haven't talked to them yet. We need to ask their permission to put it there. So we'll take the opportunity then. But we hadn't actually agreed the project. So we're waiting for the sign off on the project before we can actually say, will you contribute to the same applies to with this?
Okay, councillor Mason, you wanted to say something?
Okay, thank you Chair. Just, I just wanted reassurance. A comment that I made before in a previous meeting was it's great having wooden benches. But I would hate to see those benches damaged by overhanging trees and see those benches green and not be, not provide the function that they're required for. Are there assurances? Because I'm not entirely sure. I can see from the map where we've got our wooden benches, but they are not going to be in places where they're green moss up and actually not function.
That was the whole point. Those are those places for the, I always think of benches are where there is not overhanging foliage.
Okay, councillor Hanlon and then councillor McCreryne.
Thank you Chair, yeah, I'm a bit worried about the sleepers, is there any sort of resin that can go on there? Because the trouble with the sleepers is that when it rains very heavily or even drizzle, they keep the damp. So it takes a long time for people to sit on there. You have to wait for a lot of dry weather for people to sit on. Is there any sort of resin that we can put on that can sort of give a feel over it so that it stops it, you know, so it stops the water seeping into the to the sleepers? So that it stops it, you know, so it stops the water seeping into the, to the sleepers. That's the only problem that I've got with these sleeper type things. Thanks Chair.
Councillor Lucrene, do you want to say something?
Yeah, what is the total cost of this project, Colin?
As per the report, nine thousand four hundred.
Okay, that's just the cost of buying the benches, isn't it? That this, who's fitting them?
Councillor Brown offered to do the sleeper benches and the other ones could be delivered to site.
They're only bolting down, aren't they? Need concrete to them.
Financial reasons.
Okay, I don't think that does. That's just the cost of the bench.
I'll have to check with Alicia because my understanding was that given physics and.
Yeah, it just sounds a very expensive project. It's a huge number of benches. Almost every few steps you get a bench. I don't know. I don't think it's good value.
Well, this project proved and it's been looked at again and again, spent a lot of time delivering it. We now roll back discussing whether should we do this project at all. There's a lot of office of time has been spent because this proposal was approved by the council in the first place.
Okay, any other comments on that councillor Roach and then councillor Burns?
Okay, for the sake of convenience, so I'm quite happy to propose the report and suggest that we, we get on with it and deal with the issues as we go forward. I think it is an exciting project for the town. A lot of benches does make it easier for people to use the wood that perhaps wouldn't. And I think it's, I think it's a great addition to the railway walk. And so we've discussed this at length. So I don't see that we should be now going back on it. So I'm quite happy to propose that we, we progress it and deal with the problems and as the issues arise.
Okay, so councillor Burns, do you want to make a comment?
Yeah. I. Who proposed wooden benches and provided a lot of story. There's two issues. There's numbers. And also outside.
Can't hear, can't hear.
Is that better? People here can hear Alan.
Yeah, that's fine, no problem.
There's two issues as said. One is the number of benches and the other is the type of bench. I agree totally. Time has gone on. We're in July coming up this year, this week. I would argue that I think, yes, we could put some benches out, but I think we ought to split it into following years. Do some this year, some next year, ditto, ditto. I also think the ones in West Ham Park, I don't see why we should be careful considering it's not only Environment Agency, but it's actually in Withersfield. And secondly, in terms of the benches, I much prefer wooden benches made out of solid oak. Fitted, built and fitted for a fixed price, including the concrete base. And things have changed since you approved this and I would argue that that's what we should be going for. We should be revisiting properly the locations. Both councillor Davidson and councillor Stinchcombe have walked that route many, many times and identified many places where benches could go. But it's no point putting a bench down where someone can't see anything because of foliage or bushes and all this sort of stuff. It just becomes effectively a tunnel effect. So I can't accept what councillor Roach has proposed. Thank you.
Okay, so councillor Marks was next and then councillor Mason.
I just really want to say that when you put the benches in the high street, there were a lot of incredibly positive comments from the public. They do appreciate them. They do appreciate the work. I'm not sure they understand that the council do a lot of this, but you know, I really think if we can enhance an area and make it nicer for people to enjoy it. And as Clark has said, a lot of people don't have the capability to walk long distances, but they do enjoy walking it. So, you know, in principle, I'm totally in agreement. I'm also in agreement with councillor Henlon that if we're going to use something for people to sit on, if we could treat it to make it not water permeable. I don't know if tantalising it, actually, I'm not quite sure. I think that repels the water and they probably are tantalised. So again, I'm, I'm very supportive of it. I'm not an expert in what sort of benches we should have. But I just think we should support the project. I'm fully in support of the principle of the project and thank you for all the officer work that's gone into that.
Okay, thank you councillor Smith. Oh, sorry councillor Mason first.
Thank you. I just want to expand on a comment that councillor Marks has just said. Entirely agree with her sentiment. Not everybody has good mobility. The frequency of seating is actually quite important for people that, who may want to enjoy the railway walk, may want to spend a considerable amount of time walking it under their own steam and happy to do so. But would, could only do that with a good frequency of chairs. I, I, I agree with the sentiment that we've made a decision on this. This is a report. We committed to it as a project and I would second councillor Roach's proposal.
Okay. Okay councillor Brown.
Thanks Chair. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. I totally agree with putting benches around West Ham Park. The vast majority of people that actually, I know it's in Withersfield, but the vast majority of people that use it do come from Haverhill and it's a great asset, you know, for the town. So I think, you know, we should spend a few quid on it, three or four benches. And as someone was saying, the benches are at one end. The further, you know, away that you get from the, from the road, there are no benches. So it'd be good to put something there. I would also say that I also agree with John. I don't think we should do, buy the whole lot in one go. There's a, there's a, there are positioning issues, I think. I walk all the way from East Ham Park, all the way along the railway walk to the sports centre. And I keep looking and I can only, especially now that all the foliage is out. I can only see one or two, potentially two spaces that a bench could actually fit at the moment. I don't know if someone needs to just go along there now as it is and just, you know, confirm what they've looked at earlier in the year because now with the overgrowth, it's, it's, there's hardly anywhere that you could actually put a bench. But no, I'll support the project. But I say, I think the best thing would be to buy a few benches this year and some next year. And yeah, do it, do it like that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you councillor Smith.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry.
Yeah, it's a bit better.
Yes.
Sorry Dave, can't hear you very well.
He's muted. That might have something to do with it. I suppose it. Can you hear me now? I've contributed most to it. It's rocky.
Sure, it's breaking up. Do you want to speak to the room? Speak to the room.
Yes. I mean, I probably don't decide. Well, after the pitch, but from the report, not to.
Okay. Okay, so the poser was from councillor Roach to progress with this, accept this report as it is. And seconded by councillor Mason. Can we have a show of hands for that, please? Okay, any against? Or two? Yep, so that's, that's moved. Okay.
What type of bench are we going for? We haven't decided that as far as I can understand because there's a proposal for another type of bench. And we seem to just be wanting to go with one supplier that we may have used before. Just because there were charity that in one of the papers said we actually support that charity. And I don't ever remember voting for that charity. We just happened to go to a supplier. I have no problem with the benches. I just have a problem with, let's consider the options. Thank you.
That's all we had. The council were given a range of benches and narrowed down. The council chose these two benches from a range that Alicia put together. Now subsequently councillor Davidson's report highlights in a few words to wear off. I'm not sure quite which bench it's supposed to replace. It's, it's a wooden one. It's more expensive than the railway sleepers are. But it looks a bit more like a plastic one. And plastic isn't from the charity. The charity doesn't do that design anymore. It's the same design from a different supplier and it was designed as chosen.
Okay, so. And then that we changed the design, the original choices that we made. We got a proposal and we just accepted it, yeah. We just voted on the actual project as it is at the moment. Sorry councillor Marks.
Yeah, absolutely support the project. No, no problem with that. But can I just say Tony councillor Brown has a really lot of experience in citing things and land areas. And he has commented that some of them simply would be buried in the undergrowth at the moment and with lots of overhanging trees. Can I please just suggest that we do take up his suggestion to look at those areas? Whether the trees around them can be pollarded to make it a sensible space? Or whether actually looking at it at this time of year as opposed to earlier when the project was conceived? I think there would be some practicality in that to say whether, whether, you know, whether it's sensible. There's no point in putting a bench somewhere where it's going to be buried in the undergrowth. So if I could just ask that we could just look at that, whether we could pollard those trees and make it a sensible area or it simply is non-viable because otherwise it's not going to be very practical really, is it? So although I absolutely support the project in principle, there are just a few things I think need ironing out. So thank you.
So that's a proposal from councillor Marks. Following one from what councillor Brown said earlier. So a review of the locations of the actual benches. So we've agreed the project already going forward with the previously accepted benches. And councillor Marks is posing that we have a review of the locations because of the. Yep, okay. Can, is anyone want to second that? Proposal. Councillor Mason and can we have a vote on that then please? Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Yep. Okay, that's lovely. Okay then, thank you everybody. I think from, from what I gather, we're voting for the original decision. Yes, Colleen, of the, the ones that we actually looked at in the previous meeting, didn't we?
You just voted.
Yeah.
This is parasympathy. But to look at the. Foliage sector to make sure because we have a main 13. And obviously this is being roughly sanctioned, so it would be interesting to check. And then we'll work out the costs. I think councillors also accepted the position that the projects aren't done all in one go.
Yeah.
Councillors agree, that's what they thought they voted.
Yeah. Yep, okay, that's fine. Is that okay councillor Burns?
Well, I, I still don't understand, and I'm not being thick here, is that we had a proposal some while back because an officer of this council was quite hard to find a couple of bench, a bench or a couple of manufacturers, if you like. But it's like buying a car. You would, you, you shouldn't be, I have no problem proving a budget. I have no problem saying X number of benches, but we should just exclude a supplier of some sort. Doesn't matter whether it's wood, metal or whatever. Until we know exactly what it is we're going to be doing. We, we, we don't seem to have a definitive thing here. And, you know, you voted on it, that's fine. And I just, I just want to make my point clear. Thank you.
Just as a point of order Chair, is there not a danger that we're actually beginning to try to micromanage this, this project? But we charge the officers with a task and, you know, we selected benches and we agreed in principle to, to go ahead with the project as was. It, it feels like we're beginning to take over the decision-making projects on the implementation of a, implementation of a project. It feels like we're beginning to micromanage it. Is that, is that not within the scope of kind of beyond necessarily what we need to do as a town council?
They agreed the project, they've chosen the benches, they asked to pay and check which benches go where. And we've done all of those things. There has been a reasonable reason for us all to talk to the table to have a different edge. But the discussion didn't really think so. The interpretation of the report is more expensive of the edges that I'd known here. I don't know completely yet. I don't want to talk about that edge. So it doesn't seem to be an act. To put the budget up to incorporate the bench built by the business.
Yeah, councillor Marks.
No.
Sorry.
Sorry, the benches are more expensive. The benches for the business are £550. The railway wooden bench is £338. So it's £620 more expensive.
Yeah, so councillor Marks.
Yeah, can I just make a suggestion? I think somebody's already suggested that we do it over three years. So you're going to put the benches in that we proposed in year one. That will give us a year to evaluate the quality and the position and how those benches work. If year two, I don't think it's unreasonable that if they didn't work, then in years two and three, we say actually, for whatever reason, those didn't work very well, we've then only committed to a third of them. So we've made a commitment to the project, we've made a commitment to make sure that they're in the right location. We're going to tranche it over three years and we've now got an opportunity next year just to review whether we're comfortable with the benches that we've bought. I don't think that, I think that would work quite well, but that's just my thoughts. Would councillor Burns be happy with that thought?
Councillor Burns?
Yeah.
That's basically what I was suggesting from day one is we do, you know, from the start that we do a few at a time. But we're not comparing apples with apples here because I understand the, the wooden version is an all-inclusive price where the version that we've been proposed here is actually just purely for the items. And the all-inclusive, I mean, includes installation, I believe. So, but that can be clarified post-meeting. Well, I just wanted to make sure that we understood that. Thank you. Well, I just wanted to make sure that we understood that, thank you.
Okay. Sorry. I think we've sort of discussed that as much as I think we can for today. We've made a vote on it already. If we'll, we'll move forward on that. So obviously I think we can review it as councillor Mark says. These sort of things will be under review as we, as we go through and install some of those and, and go forward. Thank you.
We have a quick, brief discussion that will tidy up the minutes.
Yeah, okay. So if I can have a show of hands for, for what councillor Marks just. Yeah. Yeah, that's lovely, thank you. Okay, so going on to 11B, the circular, to receive a verbal report from councillor Staves and Stinchcombe. Approve further 1,000 funds for the circular walks project. Okay, so councillor, do you want to speak first or councillor Davison? Councillor Davison first, yeah, thank you. Your microphone needs to go on councillor Davison.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, at the full council meeting, actually a year ago, on the 22nd of June 2020. An initial budget of a thousand pound was approved to enable us to establish circular walks, which we have called Walk Around Haverhill. Covid has certainly got in our way somewhat, but one year later, we're pleased to announce that our flagship walk is now ready. And indeed, the inaugural walk will take place on the 24th of July. This 12-mile walk will start from the leisure centre and will take in Kerington, Rattling, Thurlow, Withersfield and back to Haverhill. Our mayor, councillor Liz Smith, will be taking part. And all councillors are more than welcome to join us to take part in the whole walk, part of it? Or just to show support at the photo opportunity at the start. We've now spent just under the 1,000 pound on equipment. Waymark discs and new posts as necessary. An itemised report has already been passed to the town clerk. With your agreement, we would however like to continue with this work. We have identified many other walks around Haverhill, although somewhat shorter in length. We therefore allow to request the ability to draw down another 1,000 pound to be used to waymark further walks. This should be sufficient for another two or three walks, depending on how many new posts we have to replace. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Okay. Were you going to add to that at all councillor Stinchcombe as part of the report?
No, thank you.
No, thank you. Councillor Marks, thank you.
I think it's an absolutely brilliant project and enhances the walks and I am absolutely delighted to second that.
Okay, thank you. So the proposal then is from councillor Davison. No, certainly. And then councillor Marks is going to second. Can I have a show of hands then? Yep, lovely, thank you, unanimous. Yes, councillor Helen.
Just on that, can I ask councillor Davison to email us nearer the time? To remind us, please.
Yeah.
Could you email the councillors, town councillors nearer the day that it's going to happen? Just to remind us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that councillor Davison. Right, so item 12, appointments to the committees. So hopefully you've all had the paperwork relating to this, which proposed the committees. There were some that had vacant. Vacant term posts, weren't there? Have you got them on screen, Colleen? Yeah, so this first one is the planning committee. So this is how it is at the moment, isn't it? So are there any changes on that? Any suggested changes? Should we just propose those on block then, more? And then go for that one? Okay. So we can go for each committee meeting, then we'll vote on block. So we've got leisure and community committee. No changes I can see from that. Yeah, councillor Burns? Oh dear. Okay. Okay, councillor Fox, yeah. She's saying, yeah, is she agreeing to that? I can't see.
She's got a thumbs up.
Yeah, I'm, I'm agreeing to that.
Okay, so councillor Fox come off and councillor Lucchini go on. Is that okay with you councillor Lucchini? Yeah, okay, thank you. So we'll do that as part of the whole proposal in a moment. Okay, so. Then we'll go on to the next one, once Colleen's just finished that bit. Yeah. Okay, so the next pretty. Which one, I can't see any personnel, sorry, couldn't see on the screen. Okay, so no changes there, I don't believe. Go on to that, oh, there's a vacancy, isn't there? Anyone want to join personnel? Councillor Burns? Yeah, councillor Burns for that one.
You probably can hear me now.
Yeah.
Sorry, yeah, only because there's a vacancy, I see that, so.
Okay, lovely.
Well, I used to be on it before, but it's up to you.
Okay, then.
It's up to you.
So next one. Appeals committee. So that is as well, but bearing in mind if you're on personnel, you can't be on commu-, on appeals. So is there anybody who wants to be on appeals committee? Councillor Marks, thank you. Art Centre Development Group, any changes? Nope. And any more? Energy Sustainability. Is the next one. No changes. Okay. Tendjin Working Party. Councillor Davison. Okay, is it possible to increase that, do you know, Colleen? Okay, is everyone happy with that? You can take a vote or? Oh, there's, we are, sorry. We, we propose that we will increase it to five and have councillor Davison. Okay, so next. Yes.
In terms of the scope of the committees, in particular the Energy and Sustainability Committee. Those are the different projects that was raised, and I think this is at the beginning of the year, a good opportunity to review. One of the projects was about community-based art projects around the town. And what I'm concerned is some crossover between the Energy and Sustainability Committee and the Leisure and Community Committee. Because many of the leisure and community committee would be very interested in a community art space. And that was raised within the Energy and Sustainability Committee. And it's just, what is the scope of that committee? Because there seems to be that overlap. Where are you beginning to engage in projects that should not be in that committee, but should actually be part of the leisure and community? Because one of my passions is the sustainability and all of this should be evident throughout all the committees. And as I say, it's not really a pleasant, it's a general item, it's a point of view regarding the nature of the committees and some of the projects that go in on there. I just wondered if you had any thought about making sure the scope of working of that group doesn't impinge upon the work of another committee.
Yeah. Yeah. I think with the, with the committees, when they're set up, we have a terms of reference for them, don't we, Colleen? So we could have a look at the terms of reference when we meet those committees, we can raise it as a matter. On those committees. Would you? Would that be something we could do, Colleen?
Yeah, I, I remember a presentation about arts, but I thought that was a.
I think that was at Leisure and Community, yes. But I think councillor Mason's saying that it could potentially be something that's obviously related to energy as well. Well, they're not quite. That's okay. Okay. Councillor Brown?
Yeah, being Chair of the Sustainability Committee, I can't remember really discussing an arts project as such. I think as councillor Smith said, it was in the leisure committee, I think, if I, if I remember rightly, Joe. Thank you.
Yeah, I think Joe's just acknowledged that, so yeah, councillor Mason's just acknowledged that. So, but thank you. So the Tendjin Working Party is the last one or? And then? That's it, isn't it? Last one? Yeah, okay then, so if we can have a poser on block, councillor Marks? Seconda councillor Hanlon and a show of hands, please. Thank you. Okay. I'm just keeping an eye on the time, actually it's got no time on here, obviously.
You're all right for another 12 minutes.
Okay. There, thank you. Okay, so item 14, appointment of finance committee attached. So. That's a separate one, wasn't it? Because that wasn't in the ones we just did, was it? So is everyone happy that that continues as it is? Councillor Marks? Oh, okay, so it needs to be changed on that list of chairs and vice chairs. Oh, okay. On the list of five chairs and chairs, you had another list just now. Yes, thank you. No, thanks, thank you. So the finance committee then. Any changes to that? No? I think councillor Burns was going to continue, weren't you, as Chair of that? Sorry, councillor Burns?
Yeah, so I was gonna, yeah, I was gonna say there's three vacancies. I don't know if anyone else wants to go on finance.
Okay, councillor Lucchini? You would like to go on finance, okay, thank you. Anybody else? Desperate to go on finance? No, okay. So we can run it with two vacancies, can't we? Yeah, okay. Thank you. So if we have poser for that then, please. Councillor Burns and seconda councillor Hanlon, show of hands. Thank you. It's done, okay, so councillor, sorry. Item 15 is the appointments to One Haverhill Partnership. It's a spelling error there, O H E. The board, so the mayor is ex officio, the other person in the board are currently held by the following. Councillor Brown, Hanlon and Smith. Councillor Hanlon has already suggested, yeah, councillor Hanlon, you go to speak here.
It's Chair, following on from what I suggested. I'm on the education and training employment. And I would like to relinquish that. Because I don't think I can be any more, any more use on that committee. But I would like to go on the master plan committee, if acceptable.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair.
So that's the task. So that's item B, the task groups, but that's, that's fine, we'll put that on there. We're okay with adding to the task groups, I assume then, Colleen? So, yes, councillor Helen? Do you have to be, I was on, I mean, when I was on the education, training, employment one, I wasn't on the One Haverhill. So you don't? No, so that's fine. Okay, are you remaining on One Haverhill Partnership though, from what you were saying earlier? You relinquishing the One Haverhill Partnership? And councillor Burns, yeah? So under 15A, the appointments to the actual partnership. On the board, the mayor is ex officio, councillor A, A Brown, councillor Burns. Councillor Dee Smith. And in addition, there's councillor Marks and councillor Roach in their other roles. Is that okay, everybody? Yep. Okay, poser for that then, please. Councillor Hanlon, sorry, councillor Roach is seconda and show of hands. Yeah, thank you. And so the appointments to the task groups, which was B, which obviously councillor Helen's just mentioned. Are there any other changes to that? Anybody wants to do, to make? Nope, so if we accept those, just the addition of councillor Hanlon to the master plan and taking you off of education employment, yeah. Is there anyone else who wants to go on education, training and employment? Yes.
This isn't any formal criticism, it's just the clarity on item B, when you're talking about, are you, have you, are you, because I noticed Pat talked about. The master plan, just reading the note at the bottom, that councillor Burns was appointed by the board in all cases. Does that automatically mean is that the mayor, you as Liz, sorry, you as mayor, will now take over his position on all of those? Okay, sorry, it was just not clear to me on this, on this notation. Thank you, so that means you come off of all of those is. I need some, I need some clarity, I'm a bit confused here.
So I, as far as I'm aware, I go onto the board under A, yeah?
Sorry, you go, sorry, not very well.
So as far as I'm aware, then I attend to the board as ex officio.
Yes.
On the task group, I don't think I'm automatically a task group.
Is that me, it might be me, sorry.
The board appoints members of the board to the task groups. And town council also appoints people to the task groups. So the mayor hasn't yet joined, so you've not been allocated to any groups. So the ex officio is not to the task group, don't you? So the. They've had the discussion really about which group you're interested in joining. As a board member is expected to join at least one, I don't know.
As a board member is expected to join at least one. I don't have to join all of them, but at least one of them.
Yep, okay. Is that, is that clear?
No, not really.
Oh.
Councillor John Burns is appointed by the board in four cases. So that means all of them, he sits on under that. He was appointed by the board, not in his own right. So he has not been shown that the board appointed. So on that basis, technically, that would be replaced by councillor Smith as mayor.
Well, I apologize. That may be my bad burden. My name is councillor Burns. It's only a member of the task groups because it was a member of the board by dint of his ex officio position there. Yeah. Um so he has not personally been appointed to any of the task groups. Um uh because he, as of uh this, well, effectively, as of this meeting, he could have been asked altogether. Um the board, obviously, I have a crystal ball to know that councillor Burns is going to get straight back on again. By courtesy councillor Hammond. So they will need to approve if the board appoints Pat as a plan for me.
Okay, so 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 although we said at the moment that councillor that will be actually a decision for my paper board when they need me at the time.
Uh yes, oh yes, because he'll have to volunteer, because he's an, he's effective, he's a government junior boss.
Okay.
No.
No, only on the board, not on.
I'm being ripped out, blew out. Well, basically, if councillor Burns hadn't been reappointed to the board by the town council, then he would have not been appointed by the board in any of those positions. Hence the reason I didn't put him in as a board appointee.
But then the board hasn't made that decision yet.
Well, they wouldn't be able to if he was so long in that report.
But they just know that he's now being reelected to the board. At the moment, those actually stand, of course, he would, he at the moment should stand down from there until it was reelected to those positions.
That's a good way.
Hmm, okay. Okay. Okay, so do we take a vote? I remember where we got to on that one. That's right.
Liz, Liz.
Um okay, uh councillor.
Councillor Smith, hi. Um you said about anybody joining education, training and employment.
Yep.
Can I join that, please?
Yeah, it's fine. You've got that going, yeah. That's lovely. Thank you, councillor Fox. Okay, so um as councillor Fox decided herself, that's, can we just vote on that, please? So? Poser, councillor Burns, secondaire councillor Hanlon, show of hands. Thank you. Right, so we go over to financial matters, sixteen, to authorize the following payments, we'll take those on block. Councillor Burns posing, councillor Roach second in and show of hands. Yeah, lovely, thank you. Um item seventeen, policy review, health and safety policy of the zone. Any comments on that? No? Oh, sorry.
Just to say that the magic hour has arrived.
Oh, okay.
The meeting didn't start, it did start at seven o'clock.
Okay. Okay, um did you hear that, councillor Stinchcomb? The meeting started late because of technical problems, so um we can go a little bit further. Thank you. So um so do we just need to note that, um Colleen, or do you need to vote on it?
Um we needed to adopt the health.
Yeah, okay, so poser to adopt that, councillor, oh sorry, councillor Burns wants to comment.
I would comment about, uh you know, my favorite subject, Colin, is grammar. And stuff. So I'm quite happy to propose the uh policy, but just a few uh ty, not typos, but layout issues. Thank you.
Okay, so can we have a second of that, then? It's councillor, councillor Marks. Um and show of hands, please. Lovely, thank you. Okay, so councillor, I'm sorry, my team, actions taken under delegated powers. To note that the clerk has taken the following decisions under delegated authority. Grants made in advance payment of a thousand in respect to the grant recommendation for the Haverhill show on the grounds that not to do so will be contrary to the intention of the council in respect of timely payment of grants recipients. And B, instructing the Christmas lights tended to be advertised on the grounds that the meeting of the Tendrum Working Party was in horror. But those councillors' present approved the revised specification and the tender needed to be published as a matter of urgency. Um did you want us to vote on that, those two together or? Yeah, okay, so uh we noted them. Councillor Roach, councillor Smith second and a vote, please. Yeah, lovely, thank you. Item nineteen, tender for Christmas lights to note that tender opportunities to Christmas lighting contract is currently live and to approve delegated authority to the Tendrum Working Party to award the contract. Poser for that? Councillor Roach, councillor Lucrini second in and a vote, please. Thank you. Okay, item twenty, to receive urgent correspondence, to know urgent correspondence received after the agenda was published. Deaf for consultation on curbside collection, consistency in collection. Um over to you, Colleen.
Uh this was forwarded out, I think it was Sal.
Yeah.
Um it's very short time period for us to um respond. But basically, it's a series of questions um that obviously you can respond yourselves, uh but responding with the council. I think, um well, it's up to you what you think, but but obviously a lot, lots of the time, people complain about the fact that it's inconsistent. That glass is being thrown into recycling rather than into bottle banks, that there's no food. Um caddy collection in some places, but there isn't others. Um and the purpose of this is to try and resolve that. So do any councillors have any comments? Uh different to how we, how we might want to reply?
Councillor Marks?
Consistencies, county to county on what gets collected and where. And the environment bill is going through Parliament at the moment, which will bring consistencies to what we do. And I think, do you not think that might harmonize to some extent? Um I've also been given leaflets by our local waste people to go round. So if I see things in the wrong bin, I can knock at doors and give them the leaflets. Uh it is an educational thing, Colin, and it's very complicated, but with the the environment bill, I think will help to clarify things because people move into the area. And they're very confused because it's inconsistent to what they could put, food waste can go in some bins in different areas and it is very confusing. So I think the environment bill will clarify a lot of this and then we can perhaps work a strategy on how we really educate people.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Hanlon?
Yeah, on that, um they do get booklets, uh new people that move into the area. Surely um the booklets that we get occasionally, um they could be supplied with that, sell them what goes in what bin. Um but my question is, and I've raised this, West Suffolk Council, um they do it in Cambridgeshire, Suffolk County, uh Cambridgeshire County Council. To have separate bins for bottles, uh for glass, I should say, not just for bottles, for any glass. Um I've raised it at West Suffolk Council and apparently I was told that they're getting finance to look into it. Um so I think we should suggest that we should have recycling glass in, on household, on the doorstep. I think we should propose that because uh this, Colin just mentioned that, you know, the glass goes into the the black bins and what have you, and sometimes the blue bins. So we need some consistency as well. And I think if you look at the bottle banks as well around, glass is quite full up. So I think we need some consistency as far as collection from the doorstep. For any glass. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Burns?
I I I fully support what councillor Hallen just said. I think, um I think the government will probably edict the councils that they're going to have to do this eventually. Um there's lots of places around the country. I think one of the problems that we suffer from here is the Suffolk Waste Partnership uh tends not to look outside its county boundaries. Um we all know this with the um, you know, when it changed on the brown bin, for example, there's no food waste and and all that sort of stuff. So I think what we should be doing is trying to, um if we're going to respond to the consultation in any way, is um certainly things like glass, but also look at all the things that people have to go down to the household waste recycling centre. Um or they end up sitting on the roadside and see whether we can encourage those sort of things to also be picked up. Yes, it's going to be expensive, but hopefully the government will actually put a hand in their pocket a bit more and give us some more money. They may not, but I'm, and I know some people may be laughing, but who knows? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Marks?
Um yeah, uh councillor Roach and I, we've had some challenges. We've had bottle banks put in places to try and overcome some of this. And we've met with the most enormous resistance from the public. I must admit, at times, we've despaired at where they'd been put when we didn't agree for them to be put there. We um we also have asked for them to look at one site at Domino's, another one at East Town Park. Uh and we're waiting with them to come back on those. They did put a second one down How Road. And of course, it didn't help that Sainsbury's at that time then took theirs away and and don't seem to, I I'm sure councillor Smith might be able to answer that, but they haven't seemed to have put those back yet. But um certainly, there it, there will be harmonization. And it will be a national policy when the policy is agreed. And we have already, both councillor Roach and I have had extensive conversations with the waste um people to say, you know, can you have roadside collections and so on? And it it's, it's just a massive challenge. The other problem we've got at the moment is trailers cannot go in to our recycling centre down here. And uh I suffer badly from this. I've got massive hedges and it's a challenge. We have to go to Saffron Warden. Saffron Warden are now saying they won't accept any trailers from outside the area. So this is something that we do need i- some urgent action on. Um and I do agree again with councillor Burns that perhaps if we could collect tetrapacks again, have been a massive issue because tetrapacks are compiled of about seven or eight different materials and they can't be broken down. They're very, very complex. And I think, I think the government are going to ban tetrapacks from what I gather. So uh the person who's made their money out of those won't be very happy. But um tetrapacks can't be easily recycled. So there are some challenges. There's a huge cost. And the other thing about educating the public is they don't understand that only nine point seven percent of their council tax goes to West Suffolk. It doesn't pay for me very much of the services that West Suffolk provide. And we're not very good at promoting that fact. So the other thing, going back to, I can't remember if it was John's or councillor Hanlon's comment about the different materials in the bins and the way they handle them differently. Of course, our green waste, our brown bins, they go, they lay out. And I think it's called Wind, Windrush or something, whereas other counties, they go to a digester where they're actually digested and used for. So so each one has a different way of handling their materials and we couldn't put food waste um out on on the land. That would create problems. So there are some enormous challenges with this. But again, coming back to the environment bill, that's the thing that we want to get through Parliament. So that we've got real clarity across the country on how waste is disposed of and managed.
Thank you. Lucrene?
I was just gonna say, standardization is so important. I I see it through work that we have customers that will contact us asking how they can dispose of toothbrushes. We can't give them a clear answer because in one county, you have to take it down to the local recycling centre. In another area, you can put it in your blue bin. In another area, not at all. I I think it highlights the items that we use most of. Don't, we can't often recycle and that, that's just crazy.
Thank you. Councillor Roach?
Yeah, just very quick, just for some clarity, but drawing it together, the environment bill that's going through will bring all of this together. So that all councils across the whole of the country have one set of rules that they all have to adhere to. So for some councils, well, all councils will have to change. What we don't know yet is how much it's going to cost and how we're going to do it. The new recycling centre that we're going to have here, um the waste centre, will be able to handle all sorts of different wastes and different categories. So that will be coming forward and we'll start to see the detail in the next few months. But the environmental bill for all of the councils will make it consistent and everybody will be the same. They'll have to do the same thing. So, you know, it's not something that we can do as a separate council and change everything now, but it will be part of this environment bill. And we'll all have to adhere to a set of standard rules.
Okay, thank you. So um we will note those comments then that is part of the consultation or? Oh, sorry, councillor. If I councillor Smith wants to speak, I do apologize. I just ignore him. Yeah.
Just want to give a bit of clarification on the current situation. There was a change of supplier. Um it wasn't seen as transfer and it was temporary solution sought. We have now got the proper permit of patents, um but they are connected to the job. Um call up management, invite the office, whatever they're doing here.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, as you were saying, Colleen.
Just to be clear, this is not a Suffolk consultation. This is a government consultation. That's part of the light of the environment bill. They're wanting to know people's opinions on recycling and whether they should be included, recycle waste teams are included, et cetera, et cetera. Is actually one of the questions in the consultation. So I'll pick up and reflect what's been said this evening. It is a government one, it's not Suffolk one. So it's not a matter of needing to worry about it. This is the government wanting to write the bill and needs to consult.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for that. Okay then, dates of next meeting? Tuesday the twenty seventh of July, July? Yeah, that's right. Twenty twenty one. Okay, venue to be agreed, but I'm assuming it will probably be same, or it may be studio.
Uh no, depends on social distancing. We can, at this two meter distance, we cannot fit all the councillors in this auditorium.
Right.
It was a bit of a, a hope that we would get some councillors who prefer to be at home. Uh clearly, there's a, there's a sound issue we have to try and sort out. Um uh it's unfortunate, my microphone decided of all evenings to give up a ghost. Um but we'll have, we'll, we'll learn and we'll come up with a plan B. Um uh but where that could be, I don't know. It could be that we can, if we reduce the social distancing down to one and a half meters, then we can get everybody in here. Um but this, there, there we, we have, this room is available in July, available in September. So
Okay.
We'll have to just see, I mean, who can predict?
Um I must admit, at the classrooms, um we're doing one meter distance, but we do have to wear masks. I don't know if it's the same at schools, people that are operating in schools. Yeah. So we're wearing masks, but we're one meter distance.
There's a difficulty for count to are uh using, if they're using lip reading, so supplement their hearing, a mask doesn't help at all.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Mason?
Chair, have we considered approaching unity? They have rooms which are substantially bigger and with their quite comfortable at town council meeting.
Something we can consider, isn't it? Yes, thank you, um councillor Mason. Um everyone? Yeah, okay. So closure of the meeting, so um it's now nine fifteen.